Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners, January 17, 2023 meeting. I will now call on Commissioner Jimmy Keith for the invocation.
Please, sir. Oh, Jimmy, please. We can bow our heads, please. Lord, thank you for this opportunity to be together tonight. Help us make decisions that are best for all of us while we do your work. Stay with us through all our trials. Stay with us through the good times and the bad times. Most of all, make us better people as we do your work. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I would like to call Courtney McCullough from the Justice Service Center in Jonathan Butler for the Internal Services Director. If you're here, if you could come forward, please. You all were supposed to do the prayers tonight. However, out of habit, we just naturally roll into it, and that is my fault because I should have said that before Commissioner Keith did the invocation. So my apologies, but if you would, introduce yourselves, please. If you could put the microphone up.
Good evening. My name is Courtney McCullough. I am the new Justice Service Director for Cumberland County. I am excited to be in this role and enhance our justice services for the county. Thank you, Brittany.
Thank you so much. Welcome.
Good evening. My name is Jonathan Butler. I'm the new Internal Services Director for Cumberland County. I have been in the county now for about two and a half years, and I'm just saying, I'm grateful for the opportunity. It is a great privilege to be able to serve not just the people of Cumberland County, but in my role primarily the employees of Cumberland County, which are some of the best people I've had the privilege of working with. Thank you.
Well, thank you to you as well, Mr. Butler and Ms. McCullough. Thank you. Okay. Is it on? Is our microphones working sounding okay?
Is that one working?
They can't hear. Well, they can't hear me very well in there.
Check, check.
Good morning, testing. Oh, it is working. Yeah. It's good.
At this time, I will move on. Madam Manager, we will move on to our public comment section, please.
And I will read the guidelines for the public comment section. Public comment period. It shall last no longer than 15 minutes. Time may be extended at the discretion of the Board of Commissioners. Each speaker will have a maximum of three minutes to make remarks until the 15-minute limit is attained. No time may be yielded from one speaker to another speaker. Speakers will be acknowledged by the Board in the order in which their names appear on the sign-up sheet. Speakers will address the Board from the lectern and begin their remarks by stating their name and address. Public comment is not intended to require the Board to answer any impromptu questions. Any action on items brought up during the public comment period will be at the discretion of the Board. And I think that's all. Thank you.
Madam Clerk.
We have five speakers. Our first speaker is C.B. Our second speaker is Ms. Theritha Chance.
Good evening, Ms. Chance.
Good evening. How are y'all doing this evening?
We're doing well, thank you.
I want you to look at the pictures.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to the Board of Commissioners. It is an honor and a privilege to be here. My name is Theritha Chance. My address is 2413 Moody Street. And tonight, I'm here petitioning for city water for Moody Street as well as streetlights and paved road. And I know a lot of y'all probably don't know that Moody Street exists. Moody Street is directly behind the U-Haul place off of Gillespie Street. And on the other side is Southern Avenue where the post office is. It's District 2. But Moody Street is considered the county, but both sides, we have city, and they have city water, but we don't. We have well water. And I'm petitioning tonight that Moody Street get city water because the water is not drinkable. It has ginseng. Some of our neighbors have to have bottled water and jug water brought in every two weeks. So we only could take a bath with the water. We cannot drink the water. So Christmas night, my water pump froze up. So for three days, I was without water. I was having to go all the way across town to my sister's house by East Smith High School to transport water back by coming by the Crown Coliseum, which is behind or across from the U-Haul place. And I feel like we should have the privilege and the honor to have city water. They charge PWC charges a flat rate of $75 for sewer. And we don't even have storm drains. We don't have anything. And not only that, when I moved there October 2 of 2019, the street was pitch black. They didn't have streetlights. So I took it upon myself to wear PWC to have them to come out and install two light poles and install streetlights on there. I live off of Social Security disability, and I paid $35, and I have paid $35 a month from October 20, November 2019 up until today and still paying. I think the county and the city need to step up and help us by providing streetlights. We, as citizens, should not have to pay for streetlights. And on top of that, our road is not paved. It's a dirt road. I can't wheel my walker, and we got a wounded worker that live on that street as well. He lost both of his legs. He cannot wheel his wheelchair up and down that road. So my question tonight to all of you, what will it take for us to get city water? What will it take for us to get streetlights?
Thank you, Ms. Chance.
And what will it take for us to get a paved road?
Your time is up. Thank you so much.
In the pictures.
If you could, you could give them to the clerk if you like. Next speaker, please. Madam Clerk.
Our next speaker is Mr. Robert Lee.
Yes, sir. Just pull it up just a little bit, speak into it. There you go.
My name's Robert E. Lee. I've lived in this county all my life for 72 years. I was born right up the street here in Highsmith Hospital. I went to Massey Hill High School. I recently...
If you could speak up, please, sir.
Okay. Let me move the microphone up just a little bit. I went to work at the Kelly Springfield Tire Company in 1970, the only real job I've ever had in my life. I served for three terms as the president of a local union out there, negotiated contracts, and been involved in a lot of things around the county. I'm a mason. I'm a shriner. I belong to the J.C.'s. I ran the county fair for the J.C.'s for a number of years. And I moved out to Linden, North Carolina, in the county, back before there was any zoning. And at the time, I didn't think we needed zoning. But coming to the day's standards, it's obvious we do need zoning. And we also need to have some assistance on getting some law enforcement. I got these 223 bullets flying within 20 foot of my house. I own 15 acres of land. I have a Fayette City Police horse named Bubba. This past weekend, he had to take a mare and her, one of her offspring, to the very farthest corner of my property to protect them against these bullets flying in around my house. I am in fear that these people that are doing this are terrorist training for terrorist acts. I'm going to turn this bullet over to the FBI or either Sheriff Ennis Wright to have them check it for ballistics to see if maybe some of these guns that they're using are being used and some of this stuff blowing up these transformers and stuff around different parts of the state. And I hope and pray like the devil that these people don't decide to go into the schoolhouses and start shooting weapons like this. Last weekend, I sat on my front porch, and I know you're going to question me saying this, but I counted over 1,000 consecutive rounds before I got up and went and laid on my property line to see if I could hear any names or anything being said down in the, behind the thicket of the trees where they were shooting. And the only thing I know is that there was one person apparently named Brandon. And when, at two different times, in a two-hour period of me laying on my back...
Mr. Lee, your time is up.
I heard the sight, the words, "Let's go, Brandon," and there were massive, massive amounts of shots, 50 caliber weapons being shot, automatic weapons being shot, and I want the county to do something about it.
Thank you, Mr. Lee. Okay.
Mr. Greg Mosley.
County Attorney Morphyll will be keeping time and will let you know when your time expires.
I'll wait. You've got 10 seconds left, sir.
How you doing? My name is Gregory Mosley. I am a disabled veteran. My home is 801 Jared Drive in Linden, North Carolina. Obviously, I said I'm a service member, retired, but I'm also disabled. And I moved out to Linden because I have PTSD. I also live in the same vicinity as Mr. Lee, but in that area, I own some 38 acres. And I have 10 horses on my property. My children, my grandchildren run around over there. And the weekend he's speaking of is not the only one. I am very familiar with high-tech weapons. I am very familiar with high-velocity weapons. I am very familiar with handguns and the capabilities of all those. What Mr. Lee did not say is that there are bullets being passed over his property line coming up in such a way that they're 20 feet maybe from his house. I'm not sure if anything actually hit his house, but my fear is that... See, I'm not against gun. I'm a gun advocate. I'm a Second Amendment guy. But my thing is, I'm very concerned that someone could actually be hurt by all this shooting because it was not just going from out the zero their weapon. This was from sunup to sundown, Saturday and Sunday. Then it went again the next weekend, Saturday and Sunday. I could shoot and practice and shoot my weapon. Never have I ever had to shoot that much unless I was getting ready to go, be deployed. So there's obviously a problem that is happening in our area. And again, I'm not against anyone having a weapon, but I see no reason to shoot that much and shoot that much with disregard for human life, for one, because it's reaching to his house, possibly reaching mine. I have not checked. I just found out about this bullet before we came here. Had I not, I had known before this, I probably would have been still at home looking around to make sure I don't have any property damage or, and I need to check my animals because I have not checked all of them. But again, I hope that someone could look into this seriously, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Lee.
Mr. Bob Carter.
Yeah, my name is Bob Carter. I'm a native of this county. Attended Grace Creek High School. Fortunately, I was able to get a Carolina scholarship. Still pulling for those Tar Heels, Marshal. I'm going to brag, I was fortunate enough to get the first Morehead County, Morehead Scholarship, College Scholarship in this county. So this is a good county, good people. Grace Creek's a good place. Linden's a good place. I live in Linden now. I met my wife from Benson, and we got together halfway from Benson and live in Linden. But I live in that area. I've lived there quite a few years, but recently, it's very uncomfortable, the shooting that is taking place in that area is dangerous. I have gone, I live about a quarter of a mile from Robert and my neighbor, other neighbor. I don't see how they stand it. I went to their house. I walked behind their house, and it's dangerous. I was scared to get out of the truck. We need an ordinance. Johnston County's had this same problem. I talked to them. They've got an ordinance to stop this kind of thing. When you've got a community, we've been in that community many years. We've got a good community, but it's impossible to put up with the shooting that's going on. And it's not shooting pistols. It's stuff like Fort Bragg. In fact, we've seen some of the bullets that have come off the guns, and it's not little stuff. It's big stuff. It's probably illegal, should be investigated. It's probably stolen from Fort Bragg, more than likely is, because they can't afford that kind of weapons. But it is coming in a person who is using his land as a shooting range, and I don't know whether that's legal. I don't know what the rules are, but I know it's unlawful if it's not illegal, whatever that means. And we need some assistance from the county to help us have a place we can live.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
Okay. Close the public comment, and then we will move on. I'm going back to this. At this time, I would like to recognize Crystal Glover and the Fayetteville Youth Council members in attendance.
My name is Raimi Mack. I am a senior who attends 71st High School, and I am the Chair of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council.
Good evening. My name is James Toon, and I attend Grace Creek High School, and I reside as the Volunteer Chair for the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. On behalf of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, we'd like to wish you a Happy New Year. FCYC has been at hard work for the past five months, making a positive influence on our city throughout community service. However, we are just getting started. FCYC has attended, excuse me, FCYC understands that Martin Luther King Day is not a day off, but a day on for service to positively engage and make change. Over the weekend, we attended Martin Luther King Youth Extravaganza, where members learned the importance of leadership and service. Our guest speaker, Brooke Sellers, engaged members to see every moment as a leader, as a leader, as a chance to learn and grow. We are always grateful for chances to engage in opportunities such as these. This allows us to become better leaders today.
One of FCYC's main goals is to serve as the voice for the youth in our county. We take our role as youth advocates seriously and look forward to one of our annual campaigns in the month of February, which is called Kindness Matters, which is Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. As a council, we may take a month to educate ourselves on the signs of domestic abuse within teen relationships and how to offer safe ways in toxic situations. We will also be posting information on our social media accounts and hosting events for our peers to further understand the importance of this topic. We encourage you to follow our Instagram @ncfcyc and also our Facebook, which is the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council. Thank you for your continuous support of the Fayetteville Cumberland Youth Council, and thank you for this opportunity to speak.
Thank you. The Vice Chairman would like all of you to introduce yourselves. Just stand up where you are and just introduce yourself and tell what school you go to. But for the one at Grace Creek, did you help me bring some food in?
Yes, ma'am.
You did?
Yes, ma'am.
He was taking one little box at a time. But he helped me, and I appreciate it. We'll start right here.
Good evening. I'm Sahara Knight. I'm in 11th grade and I go to Rehoboth Classical High School.
Good evening. My name is Michael Davis. I am 18th grade, so, seven, sorry. And I go to Rehoboth Classical High School.
My name is Alexandria Pinkel. I'm a sophomore at CrossFit Early College High School.
Okay.
My name is Victor Glover.
I can't hear all y'all. Y'all gotta speak like y'all talking, y'all talking to Ms. Glover.
Loud and proud.
Loud, loud and proud.
My name is Victor Glover. I'm a sophomore at 71st.
Hey, everyone. I'm Paul Thomas. I am a junior, and I go to Cumberland International Early College High School.
That's good.
My name is Tyson Ishii, and I am a senior at Pine Forest High School.
My name is Savannah Sisnong, and I am also a senior at Pine Forest High School.
My name is Saif Le, and I am a senior at CrossFit Early College High School.
My name is Rebecca Boyte, and I'm a senior at Jackford High School.
Okay.
My name is Mary Morko, and I'm a senior at 71st.
My name is Maria Watson, and I'm a junior at the Cumberland Virtual Academy.
My name is Gabrielle Hill, and I'm a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School.
My name is Kara White, and I'm a senior at Rehoboth Classical High School.
Good evening. My name is Ariadale. I'm a junior at Pine Forest High School.
Hi, my name is Tina Brown. I'm a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School.
My name is Danae Williams, and I'm a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School.
Good evening. My name is Kennedy Harper, and I'm a junior at Massy Hill Classical High School.
Hello, my name is David Smith, and I'm a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School.
Hello, my name is Waters Taylor, and I'm a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School.
Hi, my name is Ryan Sun, and I'm a senior at Cumberland International Early College High School.
Hi, I'm Deion Allison, and I'm a junior, and I attend Cumberland International Early College High School.
Lots of early colleges.
My name is Sophia Cody. I'm a senior at...
Good evening. My name is Daniel Lee. I'm a senior at CrossFit.
Good evening. My name is Ariadale Cardy, and I'm a senior at CrossFit Early College High School.
Hello, my name is Hannah Poges, and I am a senior at Massy Hill Classical High School.
Thank you. Thank you all so very much. We have a great representative from Grace Creek, but we need some more bears. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay, we're going to take just a second so we can allow Danny to get set up for what's next on the agenda. Go ahead and take a picture with the students. Gladness come back if you can tell us. Go ahead and proceed. We will now move on to approval of the agenda. Madam Manager, are there any changes to the agenda?
Madam Chairwoman, there are no changes to the agenda.
Okay, if I can get a motion.
Make a motion for approval.
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Now we move on to presentations. Madam Manager, if you would introduce the item and call the presenter, please.
Yes, our General Manager for Financial Services, Vicky Evans, will introduce this item and the auditor from Cherry Beckett regarding the 22 audit results.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening.
So there is a change or a difference in the memo that I presented and the information that is going to be presented this evening. The difference is that the auditor, April Adams from Cherry Beckett, she is going to be presenting the financial, the results of the financial statement audit. However, the compliance audit is not yet complete, and the compliance audit will be presented at a different meeting. April will talk about that in her presentation. At the end of her presentation, we'll need a contract amendment to, for the contract to audit accounts, and this... And this time, I'm gonna request that that be extended through March thirty-first. Not that I think it's gonna take until March thirty-first, but there have been multiple things come up during this audit year that I wanna extend it out so that I don't have to request another audit extension. Okay, April Adams.
Hello, Ms. Adams.
Hello, good evening. I am excited to be here to give you the results of the financial statement audit. But first, I just wanna remind you that we are your external audit firm. We are hired by the board, so we work for you. I am the engagement partner, that means that I take responsibility for the firm. I'm the one that signs the report and issues it on behalf of the firm. I set the audit plan and then my team works that audit plan to the issuance. Every audit that the firm does issue is reviewed by a second partner. In this case, in an attempt to expedite, we split that review up. Danny Martinez reviewed the financial statements and then Scott Anderson was the reviewer of the compliance work that's been completed so far and then he'll see that through issuance. Linda Suggs served as a senior manager. She really has worked tirelessly to get this audit through this year and then we had various staff and seniors along the way help complete the work. So what I'd like to cover with you tonight is the results of the financial statement audit. As Vicky mentioned, we will cover the results of the compliance audit, also known as the single audit. That is the audit over the federal and state dollars that the county administers at a later date. I wanna just briefly talk about internal controls and how that is incorporated into our audit and how we report on internal controls. I'd also like to just identify any journal entries that were identified during the audit. And then I have a whole bunch of required communications. So in the past, when we performed your audit back in two thousand nineteen and previously, we used to issue a letter that accompanied your financial statements. That was the required communications of an audit that are required by the audit standards. We, as a firm, have elected to only communicate that now through a presentation and so you'll see me covering those in a little more in depth than I have in the past. And then lastly, it's just report changes. So as the GASB, which is the Government Accounting Standards Board, issues more reporting standards, we are on the lookout for those and thinking about those ahead of time of how those need to be incorporated into the financial reports in the future. So the results of the financial statement audit, I am happy to report that we have finished the audit. We are dating it today and issuing it today. We have given you what we call an unmodified opinion. That is also known as a clean opinion, that's the opinion that you want. So these are the best results that you can get as far as a financial statement audit, an unmodified opinion. That is the highest level of assurance that we can give you as an audit firm that your financial statements are free from material misstatement. So we focus all our procedures on looking for material misstatements, so we did not find any. Included with that financial report is what we call a Yellow Book Report. It's the report on internal controls over financial reporting and compliance and other matters. So we're looking at making sure the county administered financially in accordance with the North Carolina statutes as well as any compliance required. As far as internal controls, when it comes to the audit, we don't actually opine on internal controls but we are required by the audit standards to do a whole lot of work related to internal controls. We have to identify the significant transaction cycles. We identify those to be how the county disperses cash, how the county receives cash, how the county pays its payroll, and lastly, how the county does the financial close, so the financial reporting. How does the information get in the financial system and then how does it get out of the financial system into the issued financial statements themselves? What we're required to do is get all the policies and procedures related to those transactions and do what we call a review of that and then do a test of one, a walkthrough of one. From there, we decide if we want to also test for the effectiveness of controls and rely upon that as a part of our assurance. Once we've completed all that work, we are required to report to you if we find any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses. So I'm happy to report that we didn't report any significant deficiencies or material weaknesses as it relates to the financial statement audit. So that, again, is the best results that the county can get in relation to that. As far as journal entries, there's two different types of journal entries that may come about as a part of the audit. But basically, from the point that the county provides us the trial balance, if there's anything that we identify through our audit procedures as incorrect, we consider whether that entry either needs to be corrected and posted so that the financial statements are materially correct or we can decide if we wanna pass on it and call, it's called an uncorrected misstatement. So it's not as big to be deemed material but it is big enough that it's not trivial, so we wanna report it to you. We did have one uncorrected adjustment, it has to do with the closing of three funds. And instead of transfer, doing a transfer for those funds to close them out, the entry was posted directly to equity, which is where it would have ended up had you done a transfer, which is kind of a shortcut. It's, that amount in total was two hundred thousand, but as I mentioned, it's just closing funds. It's not of anything of concern, it's just technically not in accordance with GAAP. So it, you got to the same place at the end of the report, it's just how it was presented. So not really an item of concern but something I'm required to inform you. The next couple of slides talk about the qualitative aspects of accounting policies practices and so it's just me highlighting some certain things that exist or might have changed as a part of the reporting for the current year. The first one is just identifying any new changes in accounting policies that might have occurred during the year. The county was required to implement GASB eighty-seven, which has to do with leases. And so what you'll see is that the county has added a couple of financial statement line items related to leases. They're basically capitalizing them as capital assets and then recording an obligation or liability related to that. And that goes as far as what the county is leasing to use as well as what the county leases others to use. And so you'll see those changes, they were not significant dollar amounts but something the county now has to track and report. Next slide talks about related party transactions. As a part of the audit, we are required to be on the lookout for related party transactions, ask and inquire about them and then decide if they're significant and if we need to do any additional testing on related parties. We did not identify any significant related party transactions and didn't have any additional testing related to that. Next slide is similar to that, we're looking for significant unusual transactions. We're inquiring about it, we're on the lookout for them as we complete our testing. We did not have any significant unusual transactions to note and disclose as a part of the audit. This slide talks about estimates that exist within your financial statement, so we're required to point those out to you and just make you aware that they are estimates, their managements get best estimate based on information known at June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. I've listed them here for you, there are things like your allowance for doubtful accounts, your depreciation expense is based on estimate of useful lives of your capital assets. And then you have a whole bunch of pension benefits and other post-employment benefits such as healthcare for your employees as they retire. And then your self-insurance claims, the liabilities that may have been incurred but not yet reported. And then there's, the last one is new, is the imputed rate used for your leases. This slide just talks about the continuation of the estimates and how they're, what they're based on as well as pointing out to you disclosures and if we had identified any as not easy to understand, neutral, consistent, and clear, then we would point that out. But basically what we're saying is that we think if you pick up the footnotes to the financial statements, the disclosures, that you would be able to read them and understand them pretty easily. So as your external auditors, we are required to maintain independence. We have to evaluate at the start of the audit and as we carry out certain procedures, especially when we are performing any non-atest procedures in addition to the audit. So for the case of the county audit, we also are preparing the financial statements. And so what we have to assess is, is the county able to provide someone with the skills, knowledge, and expertise to review those, that product of financial statements and take responsibility for them? And so we are able to determine that there are several folks in the finance department that are able to review those financial statements and make comments and edits alongside of us preparing them. And so we are able to report to you that we are main, we are independent and maintained our independence throughout the audit. All right, the next couple of slides have a whole bunch of required, additional required communication. I'm gonna kind of run through them because I don't have anything to report but I do need to at least acknowledge that for you as a part of our communication. So the first one is just difficulties encountered during the audit. While the audit is late, we did have difficulties but they weren't difficulties that this addresses. So we were provided everything that we needed from management. We just had technology and resource issues on the firm's side as far as getting through the work. We didn't have any disagreements with management along the way. We didn't consult any other audit firms on any matters that might have come up during the audit. Management was provided a rep letter and they did sign it and we rely upon those representations as a part of our audit evidence. We're not aware that management consulted any other audit firms on any accounting matters. There were no other findings or other issues that we felt that we need to bring to your attention. There were no fraud or illegal acts identified during the audit procedure and going concern. We did not issue a going concern as a part of the audit, which means that we feel like the county will be here in operations a year from now. These other matters have to do with the report itself and how our opinion breaks down over the different sections of the report. The first, first one I wanna talk about is the orange box, it's called the Required Supplementary Information. That includes the management discussion and analysis that's at the front of the financial statements as well as the statements that you'll see or the schedules that are just after the footnotes that cover the retirees as well as the pension and the OPEB. It gives you some ten-year tables of information. We don't opine on those at all. All we do is review them and make sure that they don't have anything conflicting with any other information in the report. And then the supplementary information, that really covers all the individual fund schedules that are, you'll find just after those pension and OPEB schedules. Those are the individual funds' schedules, some of them are budget to actual. And what we do with those is that we do, we do an in relation opinion. So we are opining on those schedules in relation to the statements that you'll find up front. And so those are just a little bit different levels of opinions as far as the rest of the information in the report. All right, so one thing I am required, as your auditor, to report to you based on an administrative code issued by the Local Government Commission is to look for financial performance indicators of concern that they have determined to be, to be those. And so we only found one so far in your audit that is related to the fact that it's late. Every audit is due at least five, it's due four months after year-end and then there's a one-month grace period. So the audit was due December first, it's January seventeenth, but it is gonna be submitted this week, so they will have that report for their review. And then some other types of things that they are looking for that we did not find as an indicator of concern would be your fund balance for the general fund was positive, your budgeted tax levy for the general fund collected more than ninety-seven percent. You do have an effective pre-audit process that's required. None of your debt service payments were late or any issues with debt covenant compliance. And then there was no violation of state statutes noted during your audit. So what this requires is that they want sixty days from today a response as to how you're not gonna incur a late audit next year. So we'll be working on that and figuring out the next year's plan. All right, so the last slide is just talks about upcoming standards that we need to implement in the financial statements in the future. The one for next year is GASB ninety-six. It has to do with subscription-based technology arrangements, also known as software releases. So we'll be evaluating those and implementing those just like the GASB eighty-seven leases that we did this year. So we'll be looking at that. And then the next one I just wanted to point out, or the only other one I wanted to point out was GASB one oh one for compensated abscences. That one's effective for fiscal year twenty-five but something we're gonna start looking at now because it will require a little bit of estimates and understanding. And it has to do with the sick leave that is currently not recorded as a liability. It's asking you to come up with a number for that and report it as a liability. And that is all I have for you tonight, I'll be glad to take any questions.
Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. Yeah, this has been a long road on this one. Are you under contract for next year also?
We submitted the bid to do it, so it's not, it's year to year but...
Okay, so we're coming right up on the end of two thousand twenty-three right now. So I think it's important that everybody understands that audits are just really that everything is going in the right places. It's not necessarily best practices audit or whether or not we're paying too much or we're doing any of that stuff. It's just making sure that everything is being done correctly in accordance with the accounting, best accounting procedures. But this year has, in twenty twenty-two, has brought up a lot of things that we have never had to deal with before, mostly CARES Act, ARP funding and that. And there's always been a real struggle on best practices for utilizing their money. How involved is the audit procedure in CARES Act money and ARP funding?
So for what I presented tonight was just on the financial statement side. See, those dollars are reported as received and some of them reported as spent. But as far as what I presented tonight, that's the extent of it. There's, there's, there's funds that exist and cash, right? But I did, we are in the process of completing the compliance audit. And the ARPA money, also known as the Coronavirus State and Fiscal Local Recovery Funds, that's how it'll be presented in that report, they were audited as a major program and so we tested for the compliance requirements related to those. So there was an in-depth look at that.
So at the end of this, when you do the audit for the next time, when we talk about these ARP funds, is, is an audit justification with the federal government that we are, that we passed that test? Because they've changed it a number of times about what the use of the funding could be.
Right, so they provide guidance to us to, as to, as to how far into the revised guidance, et cetera, that we are to audit against based on each individual year as we go along. So we will pull, for this year, we pulled the compliance supplement from April two thousand twenty-two and audited against that. Next year, the new compliance supplement will come out and we'll audit against whatever that says to look for as far as compliance.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Booz.
Thank you, I'm sorry I was looking down but I had to read the seventeen pages while you were talking about it. So my first thing is, is can we get this a couple of days in advance in the future?
Yes, in the ideal world of auditing on time, you would, you would have it ahead of tonight, but it is hot off the presses.
That's one thing I noticed was, well, here on page six, the uncorrected misstatements. Are there any ramifications on that, that bottom one?
It just had to do with the way that those funds were closed. So I think it's just the county decided to do it that way and then we pointed out that really the transfer, an official transfer should have occurred. But due to trying to expedite, we just left it as it was and moved on as it wasn't material.
Because, because it was running late and it wasn't a big thing, you just said, "Leave it alone." All right, and on page thirteen, that's what I noticed when I was reading along, it said, "As presented and dated in a letter, January seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three." And I looked at my watch real fast and I said, "They're just presenting it today but they already have that they've done it on January seventeen."
We issued it, dated today. So that management rep letter was provided and signed today.
And on sixteen, is the audit report about not being submitted within five months from the fiscal year end, is that just this year or has that occurred previous year?
I'm not sure about the date for last year because we weren't the audit firm but it's definitely past the five months for the current year.
Okay, well, is, as part of the audit, are you supposed to try to find out why, why it took our folks so long to get you the information or why things weren't coming in on time?
It was, it was, it was on us.
Okay.
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Is somewhere in the report, does that go in there so that this being late doesn't have a red flag for whoever we send this to next year about they were late and we're probably gonna take a little look at, it's like a misstep in the, in filing your tax return. Red flag?
Yeah, they, yeah, they are aware of the general issues that audit firms are having across the state, across the nation, to be honest with you, as far as resources and ability to handle the workload. Governmental auditing is a specialty and there's just quite frankly not enough in the state to get it done.
No, you shouldn't do that, is there any other penalties for the lateness? Is there a day-to-day late penalty going or, you know, they're gonna...
No, I will say that it does, if it becomes a habitual lateness, that the Local Government Commission does have the power to approve and not approve debt. So if they see it as, as a indicator from that regard, they can elect not to approve your debt. It being the audit firm's fault, I don't...
All right, thank you very much, I'm sorry, I was, I was trying... And I'm sorry, I was trying to look like I was paying attention to you and getting one eye down to read.
I appreciate it.
If we could get this, because we get our packets for like tonight's meeting on Thursday. This has been great leisure reading, you know, instead of watching TV, you can pick up the audit report. Or when you can't get to sleep, you can pick up the audit report. But I mean, if I could get it a couple of days, I'm kind of slow, I guess, but I can't do it 16 pages while you're reading it and go, yes, that made sense to me every bit of it.
Yeah. I'm happy to take any questions at any time.
Commissioner Jones.
I know that you stated to Commissioner Keith that you're working on the compliance report. Can you tell us attentively what month perhaps that would be available?
Yeah. And really what we're, we have one program left to complete the testing. We've experienced some unexpected difficulties in obtaining the supporting documentation as far as it's thousands and thousands of documents and a contractor performed a lot of those work related to the program. And so it's just a matter of working together to make sure that we get everything we need. And we think it exists, so we felt like it was worth giving, allowing some extra time to get there to avoid any kind of bad result that we could avoid.
Maybe like February, March, you don't have to tell you a month.
I mean, it could be next week. It could be Friday. It could be, you know, it just depends on how quickly we're able to work together. But as Vicki mentioned, if it goes into March, I mean, we would, I think we would all be very surprised.
Commissioner Fairclough.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I know Commissioner Boos was being somewhat facetious about the report being leisure reading and so forth, but I would point out that if you want to know anything about what's going on in the county of Cumberland, when you get your CAFER, and that's what they call it, it's about this thick, but turn to the notes to the financial statements. And those are pretty much written in English. All the numbers are going to overwhelm you, but if you read the notes to the financial statements, you will learn so much about this county. And that is serious, good reading, whether you're watching TV or not.
It is.
Thank you.
Yes, Ms. Evans.
So in the beginning, when I made April's introduction, I left one thing out inadvertently, and that was the fact that our financial report is not on the website. And I think April made it fairly clear, we just finished today. And so we, the presentation was finalized today. We felt it was in the best interest to issue the financial portion today as we planned. And so what that means as far as a financial report is that the financial report, which is the bulk of the annual comprehensive financial report, will be issued in its own document dated today. And the compliance report, which will have all of the single audit information and the schedule of expenditures and federal, of state and federal awards, in its own document dated the day that that report becomes finalized. April will come back and make that presentation to the board, but we are issuing them separately. We have a January 31 deadline where we're required to make disclosures about our debt and we wanted to move that financial statement portion forward. And we'll get that portion to you as quickly as we can. There are some, I guess, some cleanup, some pretty work that has to be done to be able to finalize that and put it on our website, basically to make it pretty and more readable. And so I have a request that the contract, the audit contract be extended until March 31 of 2023 for the reason that I stated earlier.
Okay. Commissioner Council.
I move that we delay the final audit report until March 31, 2023.
Is there a second?
I'll say.
It's been moving properly second. All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Manager.
Next, Vision Resource Center Executive Director Terry Thomas will present information on the agency's upcoming dining and dialogue event.
Hello. I'm Simone Pemberton. This is Terry. I'm with the Fayetteville Cumberland Human Relations Commission. Great to see you all again. I just wanted to introduce Terry, if you haven't met her already. She came to the commission and presented before us last, early last year. And it was so impactful that we decided to partner with her on the dining and dialogue that she's about to tell you about. So I just wanted to honor her in front of all of you and implore you, implore you to, well, she's going to invite you to something. So I just want you to come, basically. So I'll let her do her thing.
Thank you.
Hello, all commissioners. I want to thank Dr. Stewart for putting us on the agenda and Ms. TV for working with me to get everything scheduled. But we are inviting you to the dining and dialogue. Human relations, where we're partnering together to be able to have crucial conversations at the table with our blind and visually impaired people. And we want you to be at the table because they want to express the barriers that they have here in Fayetteville Cumberland County in terms of restaurants, in terms of outings and entertainment. And you are the ones that can make those decisions in terms of every decision that you make, thinking about people with disabilities. All of you are, all of us are pretty able to get around and move around, but when you're making decisions, to actually look at the folk that come to the table that actually have issues. And in this case, for my folk, they're blind and visually impaired. Commissioner Jones, Vision Resource Center is an organization, a nonprofit, that works with blind and visually impaired people. Everybody else is very well aware. And so this is my first time actually meeting you. So we definitely would love for you to be there. But this is an awesome event. It's a free event. It's a free lunch at Botanical Gardens, but it's going to be impactful. You actually get to sit at the table with our blind and visually impaired people, not me, expressing to you what Fayetteville Cumberland County needs. So we've also invited the city, so we hope that the county will be there. I know that you guys will be there to support us in this in terms of looking out for blind and visually impaired in Cumberland County. And thank you. And I think Ms. TV sent you all invitations.
If you could tell us the date again, please.
It is this January 25, next Wednesday, from 11 to 1 at the Botanical Gardens.
Thank you.
From 11 to 1.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Terry? Okay, there are none. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
May I add, you do have to RSVP. So if you would, whatever she sent, or if you need some of these, we can give those to you. And that way we know how many are coming because it's vacated.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we will move on to the consent agenda. Are there any items to be removed from the consent agenda?
Moving to approve the consent agenda.
It's second. It's been moving in properly second. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Council, Chairwoman Stewart, Vice Chairman Adams, and Commissioner Keen. Oh, you're voting?
No.
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Boos.
Okay. Madam Manager, we'll move on to the public hearing.
The U.S. Housing and Urban Development Department has allocated $1.4 million in AARP funds to Cumberland County to provide services to those who are homeless, at risk of being homeless, or in other vulnerable populations. Community development is required to develop a draft allocation plan for public comment and review. Our community development director, Dee Taylor, will present this item and then the board will need to hold the public hearing after her presentation. And Madam Chairwoman, would you like for me to go ahead and read the guidance for the public hearing?
Please.
For members of the public wishing to speak on this item, please note you will have a maximum of three minutes to speak. Speakers will be called for in the order in which they signed up for the public hearing. Please address the board from the lectern and begin your remarks by stating your name and address. You may also leave written comments with the clerk to the board.
Good evening, Ms. Taylor.
Good evening, commissioners. Okay. Let me just make sure that it's showing up here. Okay, there we go. In your packet, you have a, what we call a home investment partnership program, American Rescue Plan, Allocation Plan in detail. But what I have in the presentation basically highlights the main topics that I want to discuss from that plan. So as you, most of you may be aware that Cumberland County receives, on an average, about 300,000 in home investment partnership program funds as an entitlement from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development. And we normally use that funding for affordable housing development in partnership with other entities, and we use it to provide homeowners with home repair assistance. But due to the economic hardship that the pandemic caused on our community, HUD has allocated additional funding to the communities. And Cumberland County is expected to receive approximately 1.4 million in home ARP funding that would target what we call qualifying populations, which I'll describe later on. But prior to using these funds, Cumberland County is required to prepare an allocation plan. This must be prepared in consultation with certain groups. We are required to reach out to our homeless providers. Those providers that serve victims of domestic violence, public housing authorities, as well as the COC and other public and private entities that serve that qualifying population. Once we have obtained feedback from those groups and have prepared our allocation plan, of course, the draft, we have to hold a public hearing and a 15-day public review and comment period, which began January 13 and will end January 27. Following the comment review period, we will then come back with the final home ARP allocation plan before the board and finalize our 2021 annual action plan. And this plan must be submitted to HUD for final approval. As I mentioned earlier, I described the qualifying populations that we are allowed to use our home ARP funds to target. Normally, again, we use our home funds to target households that fall within the 80% area of medium income. But with this funding, HUD states that we have to use our funds that would target these qualifying populations. That include those who are homeless, those who are literally homeless, those at risk of homelessness, those who are fleeing domestic violence, and other populations, which includes those who may have been homeless, but they were able to obtain permanent housing and now they're facing risk of being homeless again. As it relates to the type of eligible activities that we can use our funding for, this would include the development of affordable housing, rental housing, tenant-based rental assistance, which provides things like security deposit, rent payments, utility payments. Provision supportive services, these are services that would include things like housing counseling, mental health services, childcare, transportation, case management services. And we can also use our funds for the acquisition and development of what we call non-congregate shelters. And these are shelters that actually are designed where there's, they're designed to have private rooms. They're not shared in a, the units, the households do not share common areas. So in order to prepare for our allocation plan, we developed a survey to obtain feedback from the required groups mentioned earlier. And we also obtained, used our point-in-time homeless count data from 2022, the Comprehensive Housing Affordability Strategy Survey, and also our gap analysis that was prepared by the consultant ORCO in the previous year. And with our survey, we did distribute it out to the different homeless providers in our community through our COC listserv. We put a notice in the Fayetteville Observer and posted it on our website. But we also held one-on-one virtual meetings with providers to obtain their feedback. So based on their, based on the feedback that we received, when we ask our respondents, how should we use our funds as far as what do they consider, which activity they consider a high priority? 44% felt that the funds should go towards development of affordable housing. 36% felt that acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter was a high priority. And the remaining 20% felt that it should be used for tenant-based rental assistance. So we asked our respondents, which qualifying populations do they consider a high priority? Even though HUD states that we need to make our services available to all qualifying populations, this is just in case there is a preference as to, in case there is a preference, we wanted to know who do they consider a high priority? And of course, 64 believe that the homeless was a high priority, followed by those at risk and those fleeing domestic violence, which 16%, and other populations at 4%. When we ask the population types that are considered high priority, 52% felt that families with children was a high priority. Now, when you look at our 2022 point-in-time homeless count, of course, it does not reflect that. And the reason is because, well, there are, the point-in-time homeless count captures those who are literally homeless and who are in the shelters or transitional housing programs. Well, as it relates to shelters, there's very limited beds that target that population. And Robbins Meadow Transitional Housing Program is pretty much the main or only transitional housing program that target the families with children. And again, those are only 12 units. So you have many families with children that come through the system that are considered homeless, but they're not able to access housing or shelter immediately. And so that's probably why many of the homeless providers or the respondents felt that there is a great need to address that population. 28% felt that those with chronic physical and mental health was a priority and followed by those with substance use with 12% and 4% each for single adults and those with two or more barriers. So HUD states that we can use our funds, as it relates to affordable housing development, we can use our funds where only 70% of the units target the qualifying population and then the remaining 30% for the remaining low to moderate income person. So we ask our respondents, what do you see fit? Of course, 50% felt that all the units should be for the qualifying population and 44% said 70% of the units. As in terms of non-congregate shelter, we asked, should the funds, if funds were to be used for non-congregate shelter, should it be used for building a new shelter or actually putting the funds towards an existing? And 76% felt that it should go towards a new shelter. And I'm just, I won't go into detail about the 2022 point-in-time homeless count, but as you know, there was 475 unsheltered and sheltered homeless persons identified. So based on the feedback and the information that we reviewed, we felt the best use of our funding would be to put at least a majority of our funding towards the development of affordable... but as you know, there was 475 unsheltered and sheltered homeless persons identified. So based on the feedback and the information that we reviewed, we felt the best use of our funding would be to put at least a majority of our funding towards the development of affordable rental housing and attach supportive services with that. And then the, a small percentage for administrative and planning. And actually, that should be 5%, not 10%. Because we do not have, because there's so much that is involved as far as the planning and the design for non-congregate shelter, and we don't have that information as to whether or not we're going to, what type of shelter is going to be built in our community. And there's so much tied to it as far as conducting a financial feasibility. We have a lot to do upfront as far as our due diligence, planning, to finding an operator for like a non-congregate. We just felt it was safe to just put it in the, for the development of rental housing. So after the comment review period ends, again, we'll bring this back for the board. And after we consider all comments from the comment review period, we'll bring it back before the board at the February meeting for the board's final approval and submission to HUD. And that concludes my presentation. I'll entertain any questions that you may have.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dee, is this, is this only in the unincorporated areas or is this countywide?
Well, it's up to us how we want to, but we really thought about it more.
Where's the 1.4 million dollars coming from?
It's coming from HUD, but because the cities get, they got their own allocation. So of course, we normally would put it in our jurisdiction, but because of the qualifying population, we can partner or we can serve within the city limits.
And what is your recommendation on that, to, to serve within the city?
Because most of the services and everything are within the city limits. It, yes, that would be direct, if, if it was, are you referring to the affordable rental housing units or non-congregate or?
All of it.
Okay, because you do have a majority of the low-income and those who are homeless that are within the, the city limits.
I, I guess where I'm, I'm kind of going with this, Dee, is you've been here a number of times. I've been here a number of times. I, I can't recall in the last 12 years where one person has showed up for the public hearing and talked about it, even though there's a financial stake in it for them. But no, no applicants have ever showed up. And, and when I'm listening to your presentation, I, I see the numbers and I see what the numbers say, but there's a lot of emotion that goes in there with speculation. And I guess my, my main concern is it feels like we're fighting this battle every single year. And instead of a comprehensive plan to come, you know, to, to satisfy individuals that need housing. We all know that in the last two years, you can be living in an apartment and be out of your rental, because rents went so high in Cumberland County. You, you could be at, at risk of homelessness if, if the, if the, if the criteria of being at risk is only able to get to the next rental period. When somebody gets a 30% rent increase with no justification, or just because that's what the market bears, you're going to have more people out there. And I just don't feel like, you know, I see these big numbers coming up on building affordable housing. We just had one that I, I commented about on another thing that's not here tonight. But the numbers that are coming up, we're spending so much money and we're getting very little impact across the board to be able to help out affordable housing and who is going to, I just feel like we're, we're a bit on a, we don't have a comprehensive plan and there's a lot of subjectivity on homelessness. And if I may, Madam Chair, I'm going to wrap this up. I read somewhere in your program that you believe, or somebody believes that there's up to a 17,000-unit gap? Okay. Is that in all of Cumberland County?
Yes, that should be, yes.
Okay, once again, and I know my fellow commissioners are tired of me here saying this, but if, if typical, if, if typical affordable housing is a unit of four, of four family members, that would mean that 20% of our population, take out the rentals, people that rent, 20% need affordable housing. And I just don't understand that number. I, I just don't understand that 20%, that, that's where we're basing all these numbers are. Because I mean, that's what the numbers come out to if there's a $17,000, 17,000-home unit shortfall. So Dee, I would love to get together with a more comprehensive plan to really get the stakeholders in here because I feel like, and some of the commissioners who have been with me up here for years and years, we get the same thing every year, but it doesn't seem like we're making progress. And we may be, and I'm just not seeing it. Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Jones?
In regards to, I noticed the feedback and you said you had 25, 25 responses. So these numbers, like for instance, it said mental health, 28%, family and children, 52%, substance abuse, which was surprising to me, 12%. Is that number coming from just those 25 responses?
Yes, yes.
Okay, because that makes, would make some sense then because even for homeless barriers, 4%. So I was saying to myself, it must be because we have a low number of respondents. Because clearly, those other numbers would have been higher with the opium addiction and
Right.
we're trying to build a homeless shelter, so I'm trying to figure out why is it only 4% barriers? Okay, and so how long was the survey giving since we only got 25? Survey, so all those numbers are based on just 25?
Correct, correct. And it was distributed to our C O C. list, which consists of about 170 entities on that list. And we posted it in the, like I said, in the newspaper. But yes, those, those responses, I guess they could be biased, you know, depending on the homeless provider, type of homeless provider.
I'm going to be honest, that's what my concern is because we know, I mean, Cumberland County has a mental health issue problem, homeless. So that just raised a red flag for me for these numbers. And the, and even opium, for it to be, I said 12% or four, that makes sense. It's only because we're looking at 25 people, that's where this is coming from.
Right.
That have gave the input for these percentages.
Exactly.
All right, and then another question would be, I'm just switching gears a little bit here. When it comes to affordable housing, and speaking of the 17 units, do we have anything in place where I know that we want to put a lot of money into new building, new things? But has the county, or well, actually, you're a particular department. Do you all have any existence or have you all looked at any existing? I know that, for instance, I kind of agree with Jim here, you know, excuse me, Commissioner Jim here. But we have condominiums for 80,000 that I know service source, just to throw their name out there, and some nonprofits, it seems like maybe economic development might want to look at some standing, they're like 80,000, 90,000, buying some that are already existing for affordable housing. Just something to consider.
Yes.
Instead of, I mean, 200,000 is a regular house, you know, amount for a house, but we're talking about more than that for some of these housing. So I just wondered, do you all have any already that you all buy that are existing properties for affordable? Or is that even on the table, has it been an option?
So we depend on our partnership with entities when it comes to developing or using our funds for rehabbing existing structures. And we do put out a, issue a request for proposal every year during the early spring to solicit those entities. And of course, at times we put a preference in there or indicate so many units should be designated for, for this population. But we do give them an option of to either use the funds for new, adding new units or using it towards an existing structure.
But at this time, we have not bought any that are already standing, is that the answer?
Not this time, not, the project that we do have coming up, they're already occupied and it's just substantial repairs that need to be done for that existing project. But none at this time where it's unoccupied and, in other words, adding new units.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Booth?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I agree with Ms. Jones on if they're either homeless or on the verge of being homeless, I think we can do the greater good for the greater number to get smaller units or not, I'm not talking about re, having to refurb and rehab them, but developers around here will sell you an apartment building that's rented. And you know, I mean, there's, you can buy about anything you want. Get on the internet, you can buy anything you want. But you know, spending a couple million dollars to get a couple dozen, that just, this money is going to run out. So starting brand-new million-dollar projects, it might just be that we got started. And that might be the end of it. So I think we've done people a disservice by having them get optimistic that Cumberland's got their back and we're going to get them, we're going to get them squared away. But our usual building projects don't come in ahead of schedule. So we're looking at long-term, and I think by then ARP is just going to be a pleasant memory for everybody. And so there's not going to be that amount of ARP money. Costs aren't going down, so as few as we're getting now, which family we're going to pick out and say, you get the house? So that's my only concern is, I think from homeless to an existing 10-year-old apartment complex is a windfall for, it would be for me. I mean, if I was outside and could be inside plumbing, heating, air conditioning, all of them are pre-wired with cable and everything else, security systems, everything. Anyway, on the first slide, you had a list, who decides who gets on the list? I mean, how many people do you have to service or be a provider to get on the list? What if I'm just a very active person and it's just, it's just me and Glenn? We're just going around picking up people that we look, you look homeless, and they go, we are. We go, okay, we're servicing the homeless. Do we get the qualified to come down and, and sign? Or do we have to send a paper to you or your committee or something that says, we'd like to be considered as a provider? I mean, who, who picked the list?
As far as funding entity or?
No, it's who gets on the list of, look at the first one.
Okay, let's see. This list here or?
Are you asking what qualifies them to be a provider?
Yeah, what qualifies to be a homeless provider?
Of those who, who primarily serve the homeless population or the qualifying population.
Okay, other than our part-time job as attorneys, that's the thing, that's the next thing we're going to do. It's, it's 50% of our life every day. And, but we haven't gotten anybody yet, but we're going to, when we get them, we got some plans for it. I mean, that's what I'm saying, do you have to have had a history of providing it?
Oh, yes, yes.
Okay, who decides the his, how long is the history?
Well, most of, so most of the providers were within our C O C. These are providers that were known to serve that population. And so, or have provided services.
We have some great ones, and that's what I'm saying. They've been doing it so long with so little, I'd like to get them something. You know, that's, that's, those are the ones I'd like to deal with that have a track record. I'd like to give them a little bit of attaboy by funding some of their stuff. Because we know they know what they're doing, they just have never had money. We've never had money. Now, we have money and we can spread it to people who get it. So that's, I was wondering, who decides, who's a domestic violence service provider? I mean, what do you have to do to qualify this? If I check off the block that I'm a homeless provider, what, what background, what are you going to do? You go like, we didn't hear of him before this. What if I've got a chain of these throughout the state? I'm moving my very successful business from Raleigh down to Fayetteville. No one knows me, but can I not get on the list?
This was open to any provider that considered themselves as, that provides services to that qualifying population.
Did you advertise it anywhere?
Yes, sir. We, we did in the Fayetteville Observer twice and also through the listserv. Like I said, it went out to about 171 agencies. And, and posted it on our website, of course.
The provision of the, the block services and it says like other supportive services?
Yes, sir.
Okay, who decides, what qualifies as a supportive service?
Those supportive services include services like housing counseling,
Right.
case management service, mental health services, transportation, legal services.
Now, the transportation, is that just to go to mental health services or to go a doctor's appointments and stuff like that? Or is that just, we have an open Uber account? And you can call and say, you know, I want to go to the movies? I mean, that's what I'm saying.
No, no.
Who decides, that's what I'm saying. Someone's going to be sending us a bill for transporting people and then we're going to tell them, no, you shouldn't have taken Jimmy to the movies. That's all he ever goes. He pretends he's at work and goes to the movies. And then they're going to say, it didn't say, who I could tell get out, and they had my number.
Yes, sir. Normally, it is for things like doctor appointment. And that usually covers things like the bus passes or if that entity has like a contract with that transportation company to assist those households.
Okay, and the survey, is that a national survey topic or did you develop it?
Yes, sir.
Group, you did?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And as Ms. Jones said, this was 25 responses. And so I think it was like 75% said they'd rather have a new house than a refurbished house. So, you know, three-fourths of 25 are making the very obvious choice that they'd rather have new than used. So that's what I'm saying, I, we're, we're down to 75% of 25. And they're driving the, the issuance and the allocation of millions of dollars. And I don't know who those people were that did that. I mean, quite honestly, I'd rather you decide it. You develop the surveys, you know what the questions are. And then you decide what is a priority for the day-to-day population that we deal with here in Cumberland County. And the administrative costs of $71,000, is there going to be someone hired to oversee all this?
So that can be, can go towards staff costs or depending on the type of project, in this case, for things like planning, studies, those type of things. We, we just reserve that just in case.
It's so specific, it looks like it's somebody's contract.
It's a percentage, yeah.
Okay, 71,731, 51?
It's going to be a percentage.
It, it is very little funding, but normally, we expect for whoever we select through a request for proposal to leverage other funding resources to make a, a bigger impact for our community.
Okay, and that's it, except for, it's been wonderful watching you grow these last couple of years, really. That's what I'm saying, you, you were more nervous than me when we first came to our first meeting six years ago or so. And you have run with this thing perfectly.
Oh, thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
I just got a couple of things. One is, we don't have enough Chodos in this town to be able to do some of this stuff. And so the issue, one of my main issues is whether we go outside of this community to look for some of those Chodos. I know Raleigh has some and all of that because supply and demand, you got limited number of Chodos, your price is going to go up because of what they charge you. And so I think that we're going to have to start just looking in Cumberland County because I think, what, we got three Chodos maybe, Kingdom, Huff, and, and what you call it? So if you don't have that, that's always going to drive this. And so I think we've got to broaden, Duggans, yeah. He used to be. But we need to do that. The, the other thing that I have is this, is each year we come here and I look at it each year, we have the exact same people. Some of these things ought to be paid for, I would think. We've been with Cumberland Interface Hospitality, that Safe Home, and it's only five units and it's 60% of the bids. We've got, I don't even know the one with the partnership with Fayetteville because it really doesn't, I don't know what that does. But we've got Bonanza, you've got Leith Commons. How, how we, at some point, we need to redirect some of this money because those units should be paid for. And then it's just a matter of upkeep and whatever in terms of how they manage it because they're in partnership with us. So out of this 1.2 million dollars, it seems as though that, I don't see any new, besides the new thing we're doing with Robbins Meadows, I have not seen a new supportive housing in, since we've been here. housing in, since we've been here.
So, the programs that you mentioned, uh, those entities actually are funded through, uh, HUD's Consumer Care Program, and they have a direct contract with HUD, but it's not, um, through us and...
But what I'm saying, we're listing them in here, a- as the units that we're using because we're doing some partnerships with them, that's what it says, we're doing partnerships with them. So, we're doing some partnership, I'm pretty sure we giving some money or something, and have to be some upkeep. Then you got this one-point-two million. If this, if that one-point-two doesn't include any of these, then where's the one-point-two going?
So, that is, those programs are different, um, where they, right, so they are, um, they target, uh, certain populations that are, for instance, the permanent supportive housing, like Bonanza, um...
Who's directly from HUD, not that one-point-two, right?
Right, right. Those, they use the funding for things like supportive services or their operating costs or for rental assistance. And so, um, that's what that is used for. This one, this funding is more towards the permanent, um, housing, and that will target that qualifying, uh, population. But that's, I don't wanna say it's separate, but...
So, that's what I'm saying. So, where's this one-point-two going? Because it's not going to this. This is HUD money, so where's the one-point-two going?
So, when we, uh, issue a request for proposal, uh, the hope is that we will, uh, receive, uh, responses from, uh, either developers, Chodos, or who, whomever.
So, each year we've come with this amount of money, and I don't see any new units or bids, is what I'm saying.
Right.
So, either the money rolls over or we didn't get any proposals. I'm just trying to figure out, you know, why we don't have any additional, uh, units or, or, or anything, each year that we come here.
So, in, in the past, so, on average, we get about three hundred thousand, uh, on, on an annual basis of home funds. Um, and so, not too many developers would be, and we, again, use that for, um, assisting homeowners with home repair assistance. And what you have left over, uh, a lot of developers are not interested. Now, we do have program income that had come in recently and will, which we will issue a request for proposal that will, uh, make a, a bigger impact.
Which goes directly to the other two commissioners. Why are we always talking about building something new when you can take that three hundred and buy something? I mean, it's a matter of what we are looking to, 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 if we're always just looking to do a request for proposal to build something new, three hundred thousand dollars is not gonna go a long way.
Right.
I mean, that's just not. But if you're looking to buy, I mean, even some of the houses that we have on, that we sell out to these folks, some of those you wouldn't want, uh, some of those you wouldn't want, but, um...
Between the new and that.
Right. And, and you can take three hundred thousand, even if you just buy me a couple of units a year, I've got more than what we have every time we come here, and the three hundred's gone. And we said we did some supportive housing, but we can't quantify that. I mean, I'm...
We can, the county can, um, use the funds to, to purchase, uh, land, property, uh, but, you know, there are some, you know, other things that probably, uh...
But I'm not gonna come out, I'm just buy a unit, buy duplex.
Right, we can, we can.
And so, I guess what I'm asking is that, are we not doing that, and that hadn't been a priority, and maybe we need to shift our focus, is what I'm, I'm, I'm trying to get to.
Yes, sir.
Who determines, and I guess it comes from there and it comes here, we do this every year, but I don't know that this board has ever had any impact or any input as to whether to buy something, build something, or whatever. So, I think, uh, and I think that's what Commissioner Keith was getting to, is, and I'd go to Madam Manager, is that, uh, uh, and even maybe the Chair, uh, is that maybe there's a committee that we decide and, and, and decide where we're gonna do these funds to get the best bang for the buck. I'm not beating up on you, but I'm just saying.
Oh, no, I understand.
Sometimes you just need to look a little bit different if what we've been doing in the past hadn't really, uh, really worked.
I'll be happy to sit down and, and discuss this further.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Counsel?
Uh, we beat up on you about this problem all the time. I can't think of the number of times that I've heard it. Uh, I suggest that maybe, maybe, this time, we need to contact our elected leaders in charge of funding some programs and ask them to help us. Ask you to help us. Ask them to put all of that in there because we, we've tried everything. I've heard you do the presentation. I've seen you off-site. You do a good job of bringing all the information back, and it stays until we go to the next stage, okay? The next problem. But this time, I would like to suggest that we, as a board, write to our brand-new legislators. Don't we have two in Washington?
Two, no one.
One of the two.
Sally said yes.
Sally said yes. Okay, I'm not too far off. And, uh, some of us are going to Washington to lobby. Let's suggest a pilot program. I remember when the city of Fayetteville was talking about tiny homes. Building tiny homes. And with this homeless population also goes transportation. You don't have transportation, you don't have a home, usually you got children and they are half-sick most of the time because you didn't provide necessities. So, can we go that way?
Yes, ma'am, I'm happy to.
And be proactive this time?
Yes, ma'am.
So that you don't get your arms nailed to the cross so much?
That's fine.
But you do a good job of working with the community that wants to work with you to solve these problems. The problem is, unless we have some faith-based, um, communities to step up and do that kind of thing, I don't know of one of us sitting here who can afford to build houses on the cheap and make, uh, make a profit, enough profit, so that we can turn around and build some more. Am I making sense?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Perfect.
You want me to shut up?
No, no, you're fine, you're fine. Um, I think this is gonna be...
Thank you, dear.
All right, thank you. I think this is gonna be our, our last go-around. Um, we want one more go-around, I think this might be the last one. Commissioner Jones?
Commissioner Adams pretty much said some of the questions I had are input, but I will say, I would like to see, uh, the list of who you all have now. You have a hundred and seventy-two people, number one. And then number two, I don't wanna reiterate because you've pretty much heard the same thing over and over about looking at maybe existing condominiums or houses. And my understanding, and probably everyone up here also, if you have any, if you know anything about building, sometimes what's already built, because if we wanna speak about supplies, that's why a lot of people buy older houses and redo them because of structure, and I don't wanna get into that, but that's a whole nother thing. But sometimes you can get quality things that's already up because the materials and things aren't made like they used to be, um, if, for those that know about buildings. So, I hope that you all will look into that.
Yes, ma'am.
Existing properties or condos that we can perhaps get people, homeless people off the streets, thank you.
Commissioner Keith?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Dee, I think you've heard from at least five commissioners tonight saying, "We gotta do something different." And i- if, the last time you came to us and the units were costing well over two hundred thousand dollars a piece, if you just actuary that out, you could pay somebody's rent for thirty years at the cost of doing that, plus you don't have all the maintenance that goes with it, whether you buy an existing unit or we rent an existing unit from somebody else. I'm just thinking, and what I've heard from other commissioners tonight is, not even thinking outside the box, just turn the box a little bit because the old ways of doing things are not really working out for us. And that gap continues to get bigger, right? Am, am I right?
Yes, sir.
Is the back getting bigger? All right.
Yes, sir.
So, you know, it's the old saying about what's the first thing you do when you find yourself in a hole, is quit digging. I, I think we're digging into a hole that we've gotta look for different ways. Um, there are properties, and we need to get people in to properties. If we, if we approve a construction project, uh, Tony, how long is it, they tell us it's gonna wait on the shelter? How many years?
I, I haven't heard yet.
Two years.
Two years.
That's what they tell us. So, if we get into an, into an apartment complex, two years. We, we think, we think differently. We start thinking differently, we have people in housing in less than two months. Okay? But Dee, thank you, commissioners. This is the most lively discussion we've had in a long, long time, but you've heard from five commissioners that wanna start thinking differently.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Commissioner Adams?
And Dee, I would tell you, I don't know what I don't know. I'm, I'm mixing up monies and stuff, and I do believe education is the biggest thing for us. So, I think that, Madam Chair, we just got the, I mean, this, all of this federal money and what can be used for supportive housing was doing the, you know, it's some education, whether you, I don't know if they want it, but if you email it just a different kinda thing, because, you know, then we don't have to sit up here and ask questions that you look at me like I'm crazy because that didn't make sense. And that's because you only know what you know. And so, you only know what you know. So, education, I think, I'm asking for that anyway.
Yes, sir.
So, that helps. Uh, because then I'll understand what you're doing.
Yes, sir.
And what you can't do. So, yeah, if that makes sense. Thank you, Madam. Do you want to open that public hearing?
At this time, we'll open up public hearing. Madam Manager, are there any speakers? Madam Clerk, I'm sorry.
There are no speakers.
There are no...
Imagine that.
You have to sign up, I think.
Mr. Simon, I was unaware of that. I've seen a little too late.
Well, if you just send your information to the clerk, she'll make sure that she's distributed, okay?
Thank you.
All right. This time, we'll close the public hearing.
Move that we approve.
I move that we adopt.
Go ahead.
Proceed with the next step with this project.
Second?
It's been moved and properly seconded.
Make sure you tell.
Uh, that we approve the draft for the allocation plan. All those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Fairclough, Commissioner Counsel, Chairwoman Stewart, Vice Chairman Adams.
Uh, votes opposed.
Voting in opposition, Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keith.
Thank you. Madam Manager, we will move on.
Tonight, we have public hearings for three rezoning cases, and I will read the guidelines for the public hearing. Uh, arguments by the proponents and opponents shall be limited to a maximum of ten minutes for each side. If there is no group representative, each speaker shall be allotted a maximum of three minutes until the ten-minute time limit is attained. Rebutts will only be permitted at the discretion of the chairwoman with a maximum of one three-minute presentation by each side. Our Planning and Inspections Director, Rawls Howard, will provide a brief overview of each case before the public hearing is opened.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners.
Good evening.
Good evening.
First case we have before you this evening is a case that was continued, uh, from the last, uh, from our last meeting, case ZON-22-0043. You can see by the location map, uh, before you that it sits at the corner of Maxwell Road and closer over to the NC Highway twenty-four on the west, east-central part of the county, as indicated by the star on the map. The applicant owner is Astra, Astra Kell International Limited. The agent is Mr. George Rose. The request is to go from A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential District, but it's also a conditional zoning with an attached site plan. The intent is to, uh, for a proposed one-hundred-and-sixty-eight single-family lot subdivision proposed in two phases for just a little over a hundred and six acres located. You can see the tract itself is this highlighted portion that was assembled from these numbers of parcels that you can see here. Here's Maxwell Road, here's Hummingbird Place, here's Highway twenty-four, sits pretty much at the junction of all three of those roads. Subject properties, you can see also highlighted what's, uh, pretty much around it. You do have a home that's on the property, uh, here, I don't know if you can see on this one, I think, see if I can use this, this point. So, you can see the home, there is a home on the property, which you'll see in the photos a little bit later as we go through the presentation, primarily surrounded by a lot of single-family open, uh, type, um, uses of land. Uh, you have the Baywood Community up in here, and then, of course, you have a convenience store in the Coal Crossing Shopping Center just across Highway twenty-four from you to the south. Uh, so, you can see the zoning out here. I hope the coloration just provides a little bit more stark contrast to see what you're, uh, going to be looking at tonight. So, this is always, as I said, zoned A1. You can see that, uh, there's predominantly the land use patterns of the zoning is RR, which is around, uh, pretty much surrounding it, sorry. And then the subdivision to the northwest is zoned R6. So, for this particular project, uh, there, there is the presence of hydroic soils throughout the property, as you can see with the coloration on the map. However, we did put these little lines here, uh, on the bottom, so you can see that there is a water and sewer line that's servicing the shopping center area to the south that would be required to extend over to this subdivision. It's within proximity, so the developer would have to extend the utilities to the development and connect the homes there to these, to these services. Uh, when staff look at this in relation to the plans, uh, it is subject to the Eastover Land Use Plan, which calls for rural density residential out there. The zoning districts or the associated districts, as you can see by the list that's indicated there, include R20, R20A, RR, R30, R40, and R40A. The minimum lot size is twenty thousand square feet. Uh, the plan does, uh, uh, put forth that the, um, an applicant should use certain types of techniques that, that preserve the rural character of the area and to encourage more than one means of ingress and egress into the subdivision, which I'll, I'll show you what the, what the developer has provided. So, with that being said, staff does believe that it's consistent with the land use plan. So, this is the site plan that is attached to the, um, request. Uh, that solid red line that you're seeing right in the middle is the separation from Phase One, which is the phase below that's touching more of the Hummingbird Place and the Maxwell Road, you can see here. Phase Two, uh, of course, is this area that is tied to the back. A lot of the conditions that are tied for the Phase One and Two is the, uh, provision of more than one way in and out of the subdivision. Staff felt very strongly that we didn't wanna propose that many units with only having one way in and out. Uh, I do believe that the applicant has been discussing with this tract down here where it says A1 zoning, that they, that that has been secured, but I'll let the, um, applicant speak to that. So, um, we do believe that they are working towards more than one way to get in and out of the subdivision. So, some of the key conditions of approval that are attached in your packet and as a part of this, um, this request, um, is that Phase Two would be delayed until the second road access is completed. So, they have to put the actual road in before they can be able to, uh, to be able to continue with the second phase. Central water and sewer is required, that's part of the conditions here. Uh, it would be limited to single-family stick-built homes. Uh, there would be a prohibition on manufactured and mobile homes. All the roads would be public. Uh, and we tried to make sure that there were no road driveways that were attached to the highways or the main roads outside. So, all the driveways to the homes would be internal to the subdivision itself and all of the subdivision roads that are in the subdivision. So, um, there are three future connections that are planned. As I mentioned, there was one down here on Maxwell. Uh, there's a stub out that is sitting here for, uh, a possible continuation of the phase over here in this, in this area, and then there's a stub out here to the north in case that the, the top development up there, then if somebody comes in with that, there'd be a stub out there that we could connect there too. So, there'd be multiple ways to get in and out of the subdivision. Uh, so, for the development profile, uh, I know this is a little bit of a busy slide, but Phase One is fifty-four lots, Phase Two, a hundred and fourteen. Um, so, uh, I think it was mentioned at the last meeting, there was a concern about open space provisions. We did add that here, that they are providing, as you can see here, about four and a half acres of open space spread across both of the phases. Also, some changes that came, uh, with the applicant is, um, they, the previous request had a fifteen-thousand-square-foot minimum lot size that was contemplated. The applicant has agreed to, uh, pretty much increase and match the, uh, the standard RR setbacks, lot sizes, and everything that are associated with your standard RR district. So, also, I also wanted to point out that under a standard RR, uh, it, it would be entitled to about two-hundred-and-thirty-two units, uh, but with this one, they are bringing But with this one, they are bringing it down to 168. So this is the subject property as you're standing on Hummingbird Place, as you're looking into the property itself. As I mentioned before, earlier in the presentation, there is a single-family home. There's one home that's located across the entire aggregate of this whole site. That is the home that you're staring at there. This is the barn and the other site appurtenances for that home. Again, the subject property, this is about as far as we could get into the property itself without adequate roads. But this is looking into the site itself. South view of Hummingbird Place with the site immediately on the left-hand side. And then the west view, as you can see, pretty much looking right across the street. You can see it's pretty much manufactured housing. And then the north view, you can see here with the property immediately on the right-hand side. You can see, of course, the zoning sign we put out there to make sure we are compliant with state statute requirements for notification. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When we took this, this last time to the planning board, it was a 63 vote for a denial of the request. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Are there any questions?
Also want to point out that we do have Mr. Stan Crumple here as a representative and the chairman for the joint planning board is here with us this evening.
Commissioner Booth.
The water and sewer is required.
Yes, sir.
Not, okay, because someone called me out to a property that was approved about 16, 18 years ago. And the developer said he intended to do water and sewer. And it got passed, and it's 16 years later, and there's no water and sewer. So that's what I'm saying. It's, they've agreed to do it, and it's subject to the expansion, especially Phase 2, that it has to be there.
Yes, sir.
And the road has to be there for the second crowd.
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
And maybe I'll ask the, I thought the last time, the last one I saw, they were going to go ahead and put the road in. And they weren't going to wait on the second phase. Because we always talk about the one way in, one way out just kind of kills me.
Yeah, so when the applicant had told us that he had been in talks with the property owner for the second way in and out that you see right down here, they can certainly do that. I mean, but they wouldn't be able to get their Phase 2 until that thing is put in, until that, until the, like, the road is put in.
But then it's, show me where Phase 1.
Phase 1 is everything south of that red line. Yeah, so do you see this red bolted line that's right here in the middle? So this would all be Phase 1. And then Phase 2 is the bulk of the subdivision toward the back. So like, if you look at the total number, Phase 1 is 54 lots, and then Phase 2 would be 114.
So on those 54 lots, there's only one way in, one way out?
As it stands now. But there's, but there's nothing for the applicant, for example, if they wanted to put the road in, if we wanted to put a condition to more strengthen that up, we can certainly do that.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam.
Are there any other questions?
I've got one, please.
Commissioner Council.
I cannot recall, I forgot my notes or whatever. Did we start hearing this case in October or November?
It's been a while, yes, ma'am.
It's been a long time. And the case started out with almost 200 houses.
Yes, ma'am.
And then when it came to us, the board, we sent it back. And this time, the planning board denied it, even though there were not as many properties.
Right.
You ready for me to make a motion?
You gotta have a.
No, we gotta have a public hearing.
You gotta have a public hearing.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Are there any other questions? Okay, we will now open the public hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any speakers?
We have five speakers, two in favor of, and three opposed. First speaker is George Rose.
Good evening. George Rose, 1206 Longleaf Drive here in Fayetteville. I want to just kind of go through the timeline a little bit with you, just to refresh my memory. And then I'll certainly be available to answer any questions that you might have. You know, we started out this process way back last summer. Had an initial community meeting on August 2nd. Took some concerns we heard at that meeting into consideration. Presented a plan to the planning board on August 16th. And they approved that original 195-lot plan that had the zero-lot-line condition, where we were requesting the reduced sideline setbacks. We subsequently got some input from this board, from property owners adjacent to us, from the planning staff. And we revised that plan, and that's the one you saw at that October meeting. It was 168 lots. And again, where 232 lots is allowed under that RR zoning. We were requesting only 168. The zero-lot-line condition was eliminated. And we went from a minimum 15,000-square-foot lot to the normal RR lot of 20,000 square feet. Held another community meeting on November 7th, and there were literally only two people showed up for that. So I think, based on the two meetings we've had, there's just not widespread opposition. You're going to hear probably from the same people you've heard from before tonight. The planning board did deny our plan at their November 15th meeting. I will say they complimented us on the work we had done, our due diligence, the detail of the plan, everything we had taken into consideration. There were no negative comments about the merits of the zoning. The general consensus was that they felt like there was a groundwater problem. And that was based on no scientific studies on their part and no presentation of some groundwater studies we had done at that point. So since then, we did continue the case to you. And we got soil scientist Hal Owen to go out and do what they call seasonal high-water table tests. Because we wanted to be able to tell you what the water table actually is out there. And his report states that the subsoils are relatively permeable. They would adequately drain, and the water would not accumulate on the site. That's in his report. And then additionally, we dug five test pits scattered around the site, literally four by four, about five feet deep, because we wanted to see what groundwater came in those pits. And we had at Pit 1, we had a small amount of water 48 inches below the ground surface. Pit 2, we had a small amount of water at 32 inches. Pit 3, we had real light-colored sandy soils and no water at 42 inches. Pit 4 showed.
I'm sorry, your time is up, sir.
We have total 10 minutes, don't we?
No.
Oh, okay. Well, anyway, I think that the groundwater issue.
Your time is up, sir. Your time is up. Thank you, sir.
Next speaker is Scott Flowers.
Good evening, Madam Chair and ladies and gentlemen of the commission. My name is Scott Flowers. I'm an attorney at the Hutchins Law Firm here in Fayetteville, located on Ramsey Street. And I represent the developers, who, by the way, if I could ask them to stand up, are local residents, lifelong citizens of Fayetteville, Cumberland County, Mark Knight and Rodney Sherrill. So these are our developers. They're not folks who are going to come in and do this development and then take off and go leave somewhere. They're committed to this project, and they've invested quite a lot into trying to address all the concerns that have been raised at every phase of this project. Thank you, guys. Including community meetings, meeting with planning staff, meeting with the planning board, ladies and gentlemen of this body, and so on and so forth. And as Mr. Rose said, the reason why we continued the last meeting, which I know caused some confusion, and I apologize for that, but it was so that we could address the concerns raised at the planning board about the soils and actually have a professional soil scientist go out and test the soil out there so we could give you scientific evidence on those questions. As you've seen, it's surrounded by RR, which is what we're asking for y'all to approve. It's right off of a major thoroughfare of the county, Highway 24. Across Highway 24 is commercial development. It's going to have PWC, is going to have a second access. That has already been acquired, Mr. Adams. So there will not, at any point, be a single access to this development. And we just ask you to consider that. These local folks are trying to do this development the right way, and we'd ask for you to support them in their efforts. And I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have.
Got mine. I just wanted to know about, because I thought we had talked about that.
Yes, yes, sir. Absolutely.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Madam Clerk.
First speaker in opposition is Robin Bridges.
Good evening, thank you. Robin Bridges, 2886 Wade Stedman Road. Page 38 of the Eastover Land Use Plan identifies this proposed development area as 95% hydroic soils. That is, land under natural conditions, the soils are generally either saturated or inundated for an extended period of time, posing serious limitations to development. I only know of one soil sample location, and it was not on the hydroic soils. Just across the road, Maxwell Road, there's a 24.6-acre retention pond. This area floods. Concrete will make it worse for current residents. There are some retention ponds, but not nearly enough. And I don't believe a stormwater plan has been submitted yet. This subdivision will overcrowd the high school and raise student-teacher ratios for the biggest high school in Cumberland County. Realtor.com recently published statistics indicating there are 203 homes in the 28391 and 28312 zip codes. The housing boom is past. People can't afford the homes they are building. Larry Yun, chief economist with the National Association Realtors, says the market is frozen. Home sales have declined for 10 months, the longest period of time since the 1990s. The applicant has requested three postponements, the last time with no reason given. This matter will have come before the county eight different times. Some concessions have been made, but the site is flawed. This board asked them to meet with citizens to mitigate concerns. I'm here to say, no one has contacted me, even though I sign in and speak here. We, the citizens, and this board have not been retreated with respect by this developer. We believe this is a poor site and a poor plan for this subdivision. Please vote no. And I'm going to tender to you a petition, petitions with 283 signatures against Hummingbird Place. And I'd like to reserve any time for your questions. Thank you.
283.
Thank you. Madam Clerk.
The next speaker is Donna Wilson.
I have pictures, can I?
You can hand them to the clerk.
My name is Donna Wilson, 5117 Maxwell Road. I live right next to the second entrance. My driveway will be parallel to the entrance. I did go in the woods, and there are pictures of the stained trees, how high the water is. I've never been in those woods before because it is mud and swamp. I purchased my land six years ago. In 2019, after all the storms, Matthew, Michael, Florence, I had to install an above-ground septic. I know they're bringing pipes. It is all sand. They have built five houses in front of me from some, another builder has built five houses in front of me that were approved. Every time it rains, their fences fall down because they are in sand. Their septic, they're having problems with their septic because of the sand. There are no consistent ditches along Maxwell Road. There is no consistent drainage. They're going to knock all these trees down in the swamp. We are very dry this year. This is the first dry year. This is the first dry year. We have been, had so much water. I have a shed in my front yard. It has extra bricks because they could not put it down. I almost had to return it, but they wouldn't take it back. So there is so much water on this land for the second road. Now, it's just going to be road, but the houses behind it, there's more water back there. That's not my land. I could not walk back there. There is so much water back there in the woods. Nobody hunts on it. It's a swamp. And they're going to knock it all down and build houses. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
Our final speaker is Vicki Jones.
Good evening, Ms. Jones.
Good evening. It's late, so if I look tired, just, just.
I understand.
I'm Vicki Jones, and I'm at 5309 Hummingbird Place off of, at 283. I'm in the book of your subdivision. I mean, I'm in the middle. And my problem that I have with it is that my property is salt. It's wetland.
Ms. Jones, talk to us.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Is that, the board, addressed the board, is that my property on 5309 Hummingbird Place is wetland. It holds water. I have problem with flooding and the sewer, having to get the sewer pump because of the flood. I am adjacent to, as Ms. Robin was talking, that the pond that they have, that they built because of the new road, the water. I'm right, the picture that they showed right down from it, so I'm in the book of it. I can actually see, step outside my house and see the actual commercial properties, the food, the whole nine. No one has been out to actually test my property to see if it holds water. And if they would like, I can test it for them because it holds water. Every couple of years, I'm having to bring in some dirt because of the water holding on my land. It's just flood. And if you put a subdivision, I'm right beside where they want to do the subdivision. That means that when you put that subdivision, it's going to cause more water to stand, and it goes nowhere. So if it goes nowhere, then that means it rises up. So then what happens? That means that I am going to be even flooded and possibly nowhere to live. So my thing is to the board, if you can rethink this thing or have them some other way, take it some ways. But that property is very wetland. It's, no one, like I say, no one has been out to test my land. And that is one reason that I'm against it. I've been out there in almost 30 years. And out of 30, almost 30 years, I'm constantly having to bring in something to build it up or I couldn't get into my property for some days in order to the water, the sun, to do whatever it do. Nature, do what it's going to do far as to allow me to come back in. So I'm just reaching out to the board, and I'm asking the board to oppose it. Let them maybe come back and go to somewhere else where it's not wetland. Even in the back, I have wetland in the back of my house. So at this time, I'll open questions. You're welcome to come on my property. And.
I guess, I'm just trying to, Madam, if you don't.
Commissioner Adams.
And maybe you can, where, just give me the point of where you, say, your house is.
I think I can see it better on.
The other one.
The other one.
The one that had all the stuff on it.
Go back to the couple. I'm at 5309 Hummingbird. This is Maxwell.
How about we do this? Sorry.
Can I just step up?
I think you said you were right around here, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, you can step over there. Oh, right there. Okay.
This pretty big yellow thing right here is 5309 Hummingbird Place. This is Maxwell Road, which is Maxwell Road and Hummingbird runs into. Maxwell Road here. I'm Hummingbird, I'm at, you ended up Hummingbird. I'm so, I'm so close to Hummingbird, I can stand out and ask Papa John to bring me a pizza. She'll say, hey, can you bring me a pizza? I mean, I'm right here, literally. I can walk out my door to the end of it, and I'm at the church.
Ms. Jones, if you could go to the. No, we're televised right now, so we need you to do that. But if there are any other questions.
So are you on city water and sewer?
No, I'm sewer. I'm on.
You're not on the city?
No, sir, I'm not on the city. Not been, have never been offered.
Oh, when, if you tap in, if you pay, they'll let you.
But I'm, yeah, you gotta pay. So that means that's, that's extra money out of my pocket that, as a Cumberland County resident, I don't have. But that's where I'm at.
Thank you.
A pretty picture, too, of my land. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers. We will close the public hearing.
Are there any questions? Commissioner Jones.
On the map, I noticed that there's a Coal Crossing Shopping Center. How far is that from the property that they're talking about building? Is it real close by? Right here in the red, red, it says commercial, correct?
So, yeah, the Coal Crossing, ma'am, is right here in the red.
Right.
And so it's across this intersection and just a little bit up the road here, they would have to tie in.
Okay. And then there's also a convenience store that's nearby there too, correct?
Yeah, that's, that's correct. Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
And so I noticed that someone said something about they put pipes to try to help the problem because I guess what I'm trying to- the point I'm trying to get to is what are they doing to alleviate this problem that's commercial land? Right here, this shopping center, I'm assuming that's shops or something that's their businesses? So do they not have these concerns of flooding? Are they having that same issue or not? Just- I was just curious about that, since, I mean.
Yeah, I mean, it's a little farther away, and they've actually engineered their site with the stormwater controls to handle that, to my knowledge.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other questions? At this time, I will call for a motion. Commissioner counsel.
In case ZON 22-0043, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to RR Rural Residential/ CZ Conditional Zoning District and find that the request is consistent with the Eastover Area Land Use Plan, which calls for rural density residential at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is in harmony with and compatible to the character of the surrounding land uses and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Unanimous.
Madam Manager.
We will continue with the next zoning public hearing, and Mr. Rawls will present- Mr. Howard will present this.
Thank you very much. So Nick Commissioners just moving on with the next case. Case ZON-22-0076. As you can see, this is located more or less in the northern central area of the county, highlighted by the star on the location map. Sits at the corner of I-295 and Rich Walker Road. You can see here, highlighted in red, it's this- it's the track that is here on the corner. The applicant owner is Bertha K. Elliott, who is also the agent for this request. The request is to go from A1 Agricultural District to R40A Residential District. The intent, I believe, is to put some residential homes, I believe, for family. It's just a little over four acres for the site. Again, the subject property, as you can see here, there is a single-family home that's located on the site, but for the most part, it's a lot of vacant land that you can see on the map. So we- the predominant zoning out here is A1, but there is some R30RR and R30A down toward the southwestern part of the map, as you can see. There are some hydroic soils that are located on the property. We have the indication that there is a water line out there, but we have no sewer. So this is also located in the Eastover Land Use Plan. As you can see by the map, it does call for rural density residential. This part of the land use plan actually does call for a density of minimum of 30,000 square feet for anything that gets built for, you know, for lots. To also provide for full range of housing types with adequate infrastructure to accommodate the future needs of residents while maintaining the character of the area. And associated zoning districts for this, as you can see, is R30, R30A, R40, and R40A. So with that being said, staff thought it was compliant with the- with the plan. This is the subject property, as I said before, it's a single-family home. This is the west view, looking down Rich Walker Road. This is the north view for Rich Walker Road, immediately across the street. This is the east view, as you can see with the overpass there for I-295, with the zoning sign again, of course, to ensure that we comply with state statute requirements for advertising. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When we took this to the planning board at their December meeting, they, by a six-to-zero vote, also approved the request as well. So I'll try to answer any questions that you have.
Any questions? Commissioner Keith.
Thanks. Rawls, does this have access to I-295?
No, I think that- are you saying, is there an interchange there? No. So you can see it right there.
All roads have an access at some point to I-295, but is there an interchange? The answer is no. Okay. And I noticed that it looks like they're kind of going into that second one and asking for a rezoning, the second parcel, but not all of it.
They own both.
I know, but what's going on here? So now you're going to have a split zoning in the second parcel?
There you go. Yeah, so they're going to recombine them and then subdivide them into three lots for family members.
That's their plan. But they're not required to do that. So the idea behind them going to R40, and they're going to maintain the second one that looks like it's south of there, I guess, southwest. They're going to maintain that at A1?
They're going to maintain that, the one that's outside of the boundary of the blue that you see there? Yes, it'll be maintained at A1. I'm assuming, and I can let the applicant speak for that, but I mean, but I'm assuming that the idea being is that it's enough land in order to be able to subdivide to be able to get the three homes up there for their family members. I should point out as well, too, that's a standalone parcel as well, too. That's not part of a parcel, so we're not doing split zoning of a parcel here. So it's following a parcel line. So let me see if I can go back.
Is that one parcel really thin?
Yes.
Oh, that's not part of the south. It's not part.
No, sir.
Understood. Sorry. I thought that they were going into that. There was only two parcels, and they were going into the second.
No, sir, that's not the case.
I understand.
Commissioner Faircliff.
Thank you. Refresh my memory, the R40A designation or the R40 designation is 40,000 square foot lot minimum. Is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Then what is the distinction between R40 and R40A? In other words, what can someone do in R40A that they can't do in R40?
Any of the A designations for our, you know, residential districts just mean you can be able to put a manufactured home. It provides another option. So R40 is just stick-built homes. When you do R40A, you can do stick-built and manufactured home. But the same dimensional requirements apply to both.
Okay. I understand we can't get involved in contract zoning or anything like that, but do you know what the intent is? Is the intent to put manufactured homes on the property?
Yes.
Are there any other questions? We'll now open up our public comment- public hearing. Madam Manager, are there any speakers? Madam Clerk. We have one speaker, Ms. Bertha Elliott.
Good evening, everyone, and happy new year to you.
Happy new year.
I am Bertha Elliott, and we are five minutes from I-295.
Okay.
And this is my property, and reason being for it being- it was A1, which was farmland. And now that we had to get it redone for, I think they told me, 4A in order to make it residential. And we do have, at this time, a mobile home to put on it. Now, we have been working on this ever since last, I would say, almost a year now. And this has taken me down through avenues that I am very new to. I live in a secluded area, and I need this. I've been broken in several times over the last eight years. But as of September 27th, I was broken in at 2:00 a.m. in the morning. And I live in an area by myself. So we are asking if you would please approve this because one day my children is coming back, one is coming back. That's where the mobile home is. And we are waiting for this to get approved because we already have the mobile home. So we need, please, this to get approved so I can have somebody living near me because it's very frightful for someone to break in on you at 2:00 in the morning. And I am still having flashbacks from that. So we really want you guys, if you can, to please approve this. We are five minutes from I-295. I'm sitting right at the bridge on Rich Walker Road, but just five minutes from the River Road exit. And I thank you guys.
Thank you, Ms. Elliott.
And the only thing I need to want you all to do for us, we have water. But will you guys please help us get some sewer out there? That's all we need, is a sewer line.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Elliott. Are there any other speakers?
There are no more speakers.
We will close the public comment section. I'm sorry. Commissioner Adams.
In case zoning 22-0076, I move to approve the rezoning request from A1 Agricultural District to R40A Residential District and find the request consistent with the Eastover Area Land Use Plan, which calls for rural density residential at this location. The request is reasonable and in the public interest as compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
A second? It's been moving properly. Second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you.
All right.
We'll go on, Mr. Howard.
Thank you very much.
Zoning 22-0077.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you very much. As you stated, this is case ZON-22-0077. You can see by the highlighted star here, this is closer toward the Robinson County line in the southwestern part of the county. The applicant owners Bradley J. Allen and Lynn M. Grilewski. So their request is to zone from CD Conservancy District to A1 Agricultural District. The intent is to put a single-family home on the acreage, which is about two- roughly about two acres in the portion that you see here. So when you look at what are the surrounding land uses, you can see there's a single-family home that's already on the property in this one lot right here. This is a- this small little red area, just going back to Commissioner Keith's, I think, concern from the previous case, this is a portion of the bigger lot. So I just wanted just to point that out, okay? It's surrounded pretty much by vacant land and single-family homes and manufactured homes, as you can see here. So the Conservancy District, just for those of you that don't know, is sometime back, the county went through an effort to zone flood areas and flood plains, the Conservancy District, and so they can match up. And so over a period of time, what happens is, as FEMA produces firm maps and flood maps, those flood boundaries change back and forth. So our plans don't necessarily reflect the changes in the firm maps that go back and forth, right? So the intent of the owner, I don't mind saying this on his behalf, is to simply just take this portion out of the CD District because the flood zone map does not follow this line anymore. It's actually back here more towards the river, so it's not a flood area. So I think the intent from the applicant is to just build a home or be able to build a home on the front part of the portion here for this entire piece of land that you see. So there is no water and sewer lines out here, but the- with the A1 district that it goes to, that if it was zoned here, if he wanted to subdivide it off, it would be two acre minimums in order to be able to put a home and well and septic on it if that was the desire. So the South Central Plan calls for this to be farmland. It encourages the use of low-impact techniques for development to locate areas with respect to natural and sensitive areas. Again, we're pulling this out. This is not in the flood area anymore, according to FEMA. And the associated district, since it is farmland, is agriculture, which is A1 and A1A, or conservation would be acceptable districts. So the applicant is going to A1 with the request, which makes it plan-compliant, at least as far as staff is concerned. So this is the subject property. This is the driveway going down into the property. Pretty long driveway. Again, subject property, going to the driveway with the house on the back. So for all intents and purposes, it would be this area. Let me go forward and see if I can draw this out. It would be the area that's in front of the house here, okay? So this is the north view on Sim Kennedy Road with the property immediately on the left-hand side. Again, you can see the zoning side out there on the frontage of the road. This is the east view, looking immediately right across the street. This would be, you know, just a stick-built homes. South view. So staff had recommended approval of the request. When this went to the planning board at the December meeting, they also supported staff's recommendation by a six-to-zero vote. Try to answer whatever I can, if you have questions.
Are there any questions? We will open up the public hearing. Madam Clerk, any speakers?
We have one speaker and opposition. Heath McDonald.
Ms. McDonald's not present. We will close the public hearing. We will move to a motion.
Thank you, Madam Chair. In case ZON-22-0077, I move to approve the zoning- rezoning request from CD Conservancy District to A1 Agricultural District and find the request is consistent with the South Central Land Use Plan, which calls for farmland at this location. This request is reasonable and in the public interest as it is compatible to and in harmony with the surrounding land use activities and zoning.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moving properly. Second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. We'll move on to items of business. Madam Manager.
Community Development is requesting an amendment to the agreement with Kingdom Community Development Corporation, approved by the Board of Commissioners on May 17th, 2021, to construct affordable housing units that will target low- to moderate-income households. Community Development Director Dee Taylor will present this item.
Good evening, Ann.
Good evening. So what you have in your packet is an amendment agreement with Kingdom Community Development Corporation. As you recall, back at the May 2021 Board of Commissioners meeting, the board approved a funding agreement with Kingdom Community Development to construct four single-family homes that would target low- to moderate income. So we're here before you today to request that you approve the amended agreement, which would allow us to add an additional unit that would target a low-to-moderate-income household, as well as extend the agreement to where they're able to complete the construction by June 30th of 2023, with the final closeout by July 31, 2023. There is no change in the funding request from our end, but I am here before you to ask that you approve this funding agreement with the changes stated.
Commissioner Adams.
We went from four to five. What's the additional funds that they got? I mean, because I want to see if I'm paying, how much we paying for the four we got, and how much and whether they're leveraging hours or what? How much additional?
So is there private funds of about 200,000? But they also have a partnership with the local community called FTC, their construction department, to help with leveraging the costs for the construction.
So four units, 500, one unit at 200.
Well, so there, they have the partnership for that department to construct two of those units. Two units. They had already had leveraged funds before. They're just bringing on additional leverage. They're doing additional units. And so he's agreed to go ahead and target, use that fifth unit to target a low income.
Commissioner Jones.
You stated that they have a partnership. Is this with FTC? Is that what you're speaking of?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
But I noticed nothing about that stating the agreement to know what the fundings are, what they're going to do there. So I guess that's my concern. This agreement is based on another agreement, but those specifics aren't in here. So why aren't they in here?
Oh, that was- that's just specifically for our funding. But when they submit their application, they identify their other funding sources. And so with the recent trade, he did submit additional information that provide where those funding resources are coming from, which is his private funds, his funding, as well as the partnership with FTC.
Okay, I mean, I understand that, but I just, I guess I was concerned about why that doesn't, you know, on here. I mean, you all see that, where the agreement asking for this. I was just wondering why that wasn't in here.
And I think that's an agreement between Kingdom and them and not us. Ours is with Kingdom. And so it wouldn't necessarily be in our contract.
Commissioner Keith.
Okay.
How much money for these four or five units is involved in this project?
Well, we have five hundred thousand of our home funds that are for this project.
And that was for four?
Yes, sir.
So, okay.
Well, I'm sorry, three, but he was still using the fourth unit to target a low income.
Okay, so five hundred thousand, we're doing for three units. You're saying he made a private investment, and now, am I going to make, I don't have the documentation. Am I making this something, this is coming from Kingdom's private for-profit organization, or they're nonprofit organization?
His nonprofit, but what's really offsetting that cost to is the partnership that he has with the FTCC.
But that's a trade partnership, correct?
Yes, so they're there to help with the construction.
You know, sometimes this is like an onion, the more I peel, the more I peel, the more I cry. Obviously, the FTC, we give money to FTCC, and they're obviously doing a trade program of some sort, right? It's a trade program, it's not.
Yes, sir.
It's not money, right?
Right, yes, sir.
So how do we come up with that number if we're at half a million dollars for three units? And they're going to put in some, what, it gets kind of complicated. I just don't think it should be that complicated if we're matching funds, we're matching real funds. We're not matching in-kind funds or, you know, different, and it seems like, was their intent always from the beginning that they were, this was going to be a public-private partnership? With their, the nonprofit investing also in it?
Yes, they're, this is, they apply as a nonprofit.
Right. So they didn't really put any money in, what they did was they negotiated with FTCC to do a trade agreement, and that was their skin in the game.
Yes, and they did have some additional funding that they put in, and that was the hundred eight, two hundred, about, one hundred eighty thousand.
Two hundred eighty thousand?
One hundred eighty.
One hundred eighty, plus you're getting a lot of the labor for free because they're using students to do it.
Right.
So I'll go back to that pine forest math again. This is six hundred and eighty thousand dollars for three units that now we're parlaying into four.
This is five.
Well, that's about.
Because of the other leverage, right.
Right, so we're still, once again, paying unaffordable prices, building units that availability is here in our town right now, and taking five hundred thousand, we could have bought five, we could have bought five and, or rented, rented for families to do that. And I just, again, and I know you didn't have time between the last one and this one to make any changes, but we just got to rethink this.
Right, right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Commissioner Jones.
Pretty much, he said what I was thinking, because I know that we have partnerships too, you know, county with FTCC. So my concern was, like you said, it can seem kind of complicated, but I'm not knowing if it's two hundred thousand or who's doing what, and I know that they do build from other projects that's nor here nor there. So when that's not stated here, I understand about contracts. That's why I'm like, you know, we're putting in this money, they're building, so why aren't we, when I mean we, who all work for us as well, why aren't we doing that to cut our costs there? So I'm just saying, thank you, Commissioner Keefe.
And just so, I failed to mention that Kingdom Community Development is also our community development, community housing development organization. HUD requires us to designate at least fifteen percent of our home funds to a CHODO. And right now, they're the only CHODO, I did have a CHODO workshop. I did have a CHODO workshop, though, a few months ago, and we are anticipating adding on a couple more CHODOs, so.
Commissioner Counsel.
I move that. Approve the amendment to the agreement with Kingdom Community Development Corporation.
Second.
It's been moving properly second, all those in favor?
Voting in favor, Commissioner Faircloth, Commissioner Counsel, Chairwoman Stewart, Vice Chairman Adams. Voting in opposition, I have Commissioner Jones, Commissioner Booth, and Commissioner Keefe.
And again, Dee, this isn't aimed at you.
No, I understand.
The deals come across your desk.
Madam Manager.
The next item comes from Community Development as well. They're recommending a contract with FMHA LLC for rehabilitation of thirty-two units at Hillside Manor. And Ms. Taylor will present this item as well.
Yes, so before you, you have a funding agreement with Hillside FMHA LLC. This entity actually, a couple years ago, applied for funding through us. They applied for our community development block grant funding to install new HVAC units. And so they, and we funded that, and they submitted an application in response to another request for proposal where they will utilize our funds to do additional substantial rehabilitation for this apartment complex that is used to house elderly households who are also low income. This is rehabilitation of thirty-two apartment-style units. And again, I'm here today to ask the board to approve the funding agreement that you have attached in the amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-one thousand and twenty dollars for the rehabilitation of thirty-two units at Hillside Manor Apartments.
Commissioner Keefe.
Okay, so does Hillside also manage the properties?
Yes, sir.
So they're managing them, and are they getting the, are they getting the income from those properties?
Yes, sir.
And we are then paying for the renovation?
Yes, sir.
For those properties?
Yes, sir.
So I'm going to go back to.
Say it.
Well, four hundred, four hundred and forty-one thousand, about about thirty-two units. I mean, it's a big number. And it just seems to me like it's, everything's in their favor, they're collecting the rents, we're doing the improvements. So in fact, if they had a vacancy, they could, they could really charge a higher rent because of it, right?
But they have to meet certain HUD income rent requirements.
Right, I understand that, but, and. Okay, thank you, Dee.
And just so you know, they did bid the project out twice, they didn't receive any bids the first time.
Fable Observer?
Yes, they did.
Yeah.
And they mentioned the state procurement site as well.
We should try Facebook one time.
Commissioner Adams.
I just got a couple of questions. This is the Federal Metropolitan Housing, right?
Yes, sir.
So how much does the city have in this? I mean, it's with the Federal Metropolitan Housing Authority, why are we spending, they got community development money. This is why I want to know, why didn't they do it?
I'm not sure, sir, I don't.
Did we ask them, did you go there first before you come to us?
I think at one time they did submit an application.
Because we've done this before with them.
Yes, the installation of the HVAC units, yes, sir.
How many units do we get?
How many units do we?
I'm investing in their property.
Yes, sir.
We have homeless folk, we got, this is the elderly. I've got elderly folk, how many are set aside for county residents? We, I mean, for us, if you understand what I mean.
Oh, yes, sir.
Because that's the city.
Right, you're right.
Do we ask?
Well, when we invest in, within the city limits, they open it up to both city and county.
I understand that, but we have people who call the county and say, I need this.
Yes, sir.
That's what I'm saying.
Oh, yes, sir.
And I say, I don't have anywhere, or you got to go to the city. But I've invested this much, well, the HVAC, I don't know how much the HVAC would cost. Now I'm investing this.
Yes, sir.
I should have some units set aside for when somebody calls the county. I've always, and even when we do, we did the whole six project down on Wimbledon Road, we got no projects, I mean, we got no out of that, even though we need space for homeless folks. So I think we've got to start deciding, and I don't have a problem, you know, I agree with this, but, you know, I don't understand why they're not using city community development money. I guess that would be my first question.
I think they applied.
And the city turns them down?
I'm not, uh, years ago, but I'm not sure if it was.
I'm not beating up on you, but I need to know.
Yes, sir.
Then why would, why did the city decline, because maybe they know that we were going to come up and take it or what?
Not sure, not sure. It could have been because of other projects that may have had higher priority, but I'm not.
They get a whole lot more money than we do in community development, Dee, we know that, right? I mean, Ms. Taylor, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to call you Dee, Ms. Taylor. They get a whole lot more money than we do.
Yes, they do.
Federal Metropolitan Housing runs a lot of units in this community. And when we call and say, we got somebody homeless over here by the library, we need to place somewhere, they will tell us there's a waiting list beyond waiting list. And then we're out.
Yes, sir.
But they come to us to ask for the funds.
Yes, sir.
I got a call Sunday for a sixty-five-year-old elderly woman who had nowhere to go, and everything was closed on Monday. And we had nowhere to send her, well, the shelter was open because it was a white flag night, and then that's it. I don't see why we're funding, funding programs that we can't get anything back from. We're making an investment and we have, we have nothing. We have nothing, we have to be strategic and think differently about where we're placing our money at. Because everybody's wondering what the county is doing, what the county is doing, what the county is doing, and we are putting money in places that we don't have any, no say-so in, none.
Commissioner Keefe.
I'll wrap this up, and thank you for the comments, because I think that Dee is seeing the frustration. Just to go back, and I know you guys are tired of here, Marshall, you're an accountant, you like numbers, right? That's fourteen thousand dollars for a unit, that unit costs a thousand dollars. That's a thirteen thousand dollar net profit after, well, whatever the installation is on that. Now, that's the kind of money that you can put into other programs. But that is, it's ridiculous, the amounts of money that we're spending on making affordable housing, but we are breaking the bank of the county doing this. We could do so much more if we just take a moment to look at the numbers, and to Glenn's point, maybe it is time to look at, to another agency outside, don't, don't use it, don't use it. But I can tell you tonight, just tonight, we have probably gone over seventy, eighty, maybe a hundred thousand dollars that we're paying more than we should be for affordable housing in the community. We could stretch that out, and we could help three times as many people. Thank you.
I'm going to say this before I call for a motion. I have a problem with them getting the rent, them getting the money and then coming to us to do the repairs. That's, that's, and you know, this is my thing, Dee, but I got a problem with that. Do they have, do they give back anything toward repairs, or we fit the whole bill?
In this case, we're paying for the whole amount.
Okay, if I can get a motion. Any motion?
Well, I would move if we approved the funding agreement with Hillside FMHA LLC, and the amount, just to get it on the table, in the amount not to exceed four hundred and forty-one thousand, twenty dollars for the rehabilitation of thirty-two units at Hillside Manor Apartments.
Is there a second?
Okay, so that dies.
So that dies.
Make a motion to deny the funding.
There's been a motion to deny and properly second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
We hate to have those in the audience raising their hands.
All right, now we'll move on to Vice Chairman Adams for nominations. We're all the way down here.
This is the KFV Valley Health System Board of Trustees, and I thought, somebody told me it was on for nominations and appointment. This one is.
It's on the agenda for that.
No, not on this one, it's on which one agenda?
It's on the, it's on NOVUS, well, it's a request for, on NOVUS? It's a request for a nomination and appointment.
It's revoked or just nomination?
I understand, I understand nomination, but.
Mine says nomination and appointment.
Oh, there it is, that's it, oh, background information, there it is, okay. This is what I would nominate Alicia Flowers on, this is, she's due to be, there are actually going to be three appointments to the KFV Valley Health Board. She's the vice chair due to become chair. We have to, again, which Mr. Keefe and Mr. Booth don't like, change our policy a little bit to allow her to be reappointed. This is Commissioner Faircloth's position, I think it only cares about a year left on that marshal, but I'm not going to make it. So that will give her the opportunity to be chair for that one year, because she's the vice chair. Now, the chair on the board is leaving, the vice chair, she would be leaving, we would not have a chair. And that vote comes up in the end of January, so I'd ask that Alicia Flowers be, I guess, nominated and appointed to that board. That then opens up her position and Dr. Buzard's position.
And I move to, because of her position as vice chair and her length on the board, that we waive the can't do more than two in a row thing, so she can finish the portion, specifically Marshall's seat.
Okay, Commissioner.
I take that as a friendly amendment.
Okay, one question, and I am going to be supportive, but I want to make sure we don't get in trouble. Clerk, because Marshall's term is over a year, whoever got that position would be eligible for two additional terms?
Typically, yes.
Typically?
Yes, but because she's already served several terms, we would do that amendment for her.
Okay, so, so, so we need to clarify that, that at the end of her year, that it's over, she can sit out for a year and then do it, do it over again? But in the real world of things, that person could go right into two more terms.
Two more terms, because it's more than.
They're serving an unexpired term.
Yep.
Commissioner Jones, I'm sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question is, the other two availabilities, we will be deciding that then when, in February, since I'm new here, I need to know when that will be available for the other two availabilities.
In February.
Yeah, the reason this one is done now is because it's vacant, because it was Commissioner Faircloth's seat. The other two don't end till the end of January, so we will make the nominations that first meeting in February, and then vote on it that second meeting in February, because the hospital would not meet again until the end of February. But this one, they will meet at the end of January voting on the chair.
Just wanted to clarify the date, I understand, but I want to know, the date of the other two is February, thank you.
Okay, is, there's been, there's been a motion and a second, all those in favor?
For one year.
Yes.
To finish out Marshall's term.
Okay. Is unanimous.
Madam Chairwoman, that takes us to the appointments for the Joint Fort Bragg and Cumberland County Food Policy Council. There are three vacancies. Representative for local farming would be Robert Elliott and Alexis McLean, and representative who does not work in local government or health agency, Cliff Johnson. I would move that they be appointed.
Second. It's been moved and properly second, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
At this time, if I could have a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Chair, I move we go into closed session to discuss real property acquisition pursuant to one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven A five.
May I have a second? It's been moved and properly second, that we go into closed session, all those in favor?
Unanimous.
Been motioned and properly second that we come out of closed session, all those in favor? Are we on? That's unanimous?
Motion to adjourn.
It's been motioned and properly second for, that we adjourn, all those in favor?